This conference will now be recorded.
Saying none, I'm going to take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve second amendment, if you can.
So moved by Councilman Stevens and seconded by Councilman Shannon. Go please.
Wood?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. In your little business, the Blue Red Lock for our new business, the first item this evening is a public hearing. We need to make a motion to open the public hearing at seven thirty-five?
So moved.
For the purpose of considering an application to be submitted to the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan State Revolving Fund.
No second.
So moved by Councilman Gurley and seconded by Councilman Stevens. Is there any suspension necessary? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Staff have presentations for them.
Do you think anyone? All right, we work with the works director. This is a public hearing required by the Kansas Department, related to the SRA, state revolving loan. And as you may recall, we pursued the owner evaluation last year about whether we should pursue the new water treatment plant and some other facilities. At the full extension, we decided to go ahead. And this is part of funding mechanism related to the project. It's required to have a public hearing. The following public hearing, there's also a requirement related to a resolution that will essentially dictate having the staff pursue an application for that loan with KDAG. If there's no other questions, that's the sole purposes of the public hearing.
Very good. Is there anyone that would like to stand and speak in favor of the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, other than staff? Anyone that would like to stand and speak against? Saying none? Very good. We'll discuss this on the next item. Saying none? I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing at seven thirty-six.
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Thompson and seconded by Councilman Reeves. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. On to item number two, a resolution concerning the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing staff to do an application to KDAG regarding the loan, Public Water Supply Loan Fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Very good. Moved by Councilman Shannon and seconded by Councilman Gurley. Sorry, I turned a little bit, but go right ahead with this.
This is a resolution that would essentially authorize staff to go ahead to complete an application and submit KDAG for the purpose of the state revolving fund specifically for our water treatment plant and other facilities related to water. So, I entertain any questions if they're part of it.
Very good. We've got a motion on the floor, so I'm very happy that we can discuss all this. Any questions from citizens? Other comments from the staff? Counsel, I'll start over here with Councilman Reeves.
I'm noticing it was twenty-two million dollars. That seems maybe a little higher than what we initially planned on. Can you see that?
The initial construction was twenty-eight million. And then there's expected to be another three quarters of a million or so in other engineering fees and to pay for our owner's representative and things of that nature that popped up. We've also had to pay for some survey work and some other field work that takes place out there. That is our best guess at the twenty-two million dollar mark. That could fluctuate until we get a not-to-receive price on the whole project. But that's our best guess.
If we found a person to oversee this project yet?
Well, we have owner representative. That's been selected and in fact, we've been using them. The rest of the process is that we had put up RFP seeking proposals. We received three proposals of those three. We interviewed two. And from those two, we have made a tentative selection. And at this point, we're in negotiations for a fee for the first phase of this. And we hope to have some resolutions of that maybe in a week or so. Early next week for sure. We just have a little disagreement right now.
The, this is a, a credit law right from the, the funds are not dispersed until we actually need them. And there's no interest or anything until that point in time, any funds are dispersed to us.
Certainly, we have to expend the money and then request reimbursement.
But no interest on the funds until they're dispersed?
That I can't be completely certain about that.
Because that's what?
But no, we don't have to make any payments until, maybe in twelve to eighteen months, you get started on the project.
The only reason is if it takes eight months, nine months, ten months before we actually, oh, that one needs funds dispersed, you know, we're going to pay interest on twenty-two million for all of the ones.
My opinion now, we only pay interest on what we're going to be drawing.
Okay.
And so, if you only draw a million dollars from this year or something, you're not going to pay interest on twenty-two million. And you can't draw all the funds until you actually spend them.
Right. Yeah, it's first.
You have to spend a million before you can request reimbursement, so.
Okay. Good to see.
Did you have to put the? I'm just going to mention that this is just for the application. So we will get back to the state and the amortization schedule that kind of goes through some of the particulars again. The twenty-two million is not to exceed the amount. So, back to Bob's question about the time or the cost and fluctuation, that's the high water mark as far as where we think this could go. We hope that it won't go to that level, but that's just that, that buffer room there. But we'll get some more details once it's actually reviewed by the state and then get it back to us.
Yeah. KDAG, the best vehicle for this full amount, are there brands, the things that we should pursue? Also?
We would pursue that we were able to find anything of formal branches for us. We did pursue the WIPIA, I don't know what that stands for, some kind of infrastructure financing mechanism. And we were in fact, worried we are not likely to take it since the increase risen now. This is one point eight-six the last time we discussed. We can go one point five-six percent the SRA. Plus there are some additional fees that we would pay with the SRA. So it's a little direction that I didn't address, but it's kind of shot up a little bit. Especially if we're, if it was a little one percent, we would, yeah, once we had a warrant by that time. It's not without, not reasonable.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your input.
Councilman Shannon? Saying nothing else? Very good. Sir's comments?
Voting to approve a resolution authorizing staff to complete an application for the, regarding the loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, thank you. Actually, number three, which is the CCLI refunding staff.
Right, of course. This is a agreement. Work for us to get a branch up to three hundred thousand dollars for a specific project, which is pretty much higher than thirty-two percent of what we know. Starting at Middleton on Cedar, down to Park Street, Park Street over at Highway seven. And this is a building over way. I think this is probably coming out of seventy-five percent grant. And they have three hundred thousand dollars. This also includes projects that has the pedestrian refuge type pedestrian problem over here. It's a station, the city hall is up, so, but we, that, that would be part of this. We have to approve, city government has to do data. They have assigned points data, they're part of them, we can hear that. So we hope to get this done this summer. Now, any other questions?
Very good. Any mail under chat? Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the proposed contract agreement with Kansas Department, transportation by K thirty-two project funding. Second. So moved by Councilman Thompson and seconded by Councilman Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here. Councilman Shannon?
I know there's no, we're probably going to be four to four fifteen. That up to me.
I can do this really good bit. No call?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for. Will Cedar be widened to allow those pedestrian islands?
No, the current width is shattered.
I envisioning just a concrete landing pad, we might see.
That's, that's fair. It's, it's got to be raised at both ends, so here, third, and at the other end, then there on the second, there will be a raised island. So that obviously will separate traffic, so that creates a right for pedestrian. In the middle, I mean, a hundred feet will be straight, you mark turn right, so that it makes right turn this out of the traffic. Both ends, that's where the pedestrian crossing would be that path.
But the drive, which are different, are separated a little bit, sides, which are different to those. Are there also going to be pedestrian, tracks coming bowls at the top and bottom?
Certainly on the third, I think, no?
I don't know about those, but on the third, so you're coming from Middleton and come on, I don't know exactly where Cedar starts, uh, Cedar, but at third and Cedar, check. There'll be new. The death and bowls. Some. There is that. Some.
Oh, neat.
Bowl. Yeah. On traffic and then they'll go around this. Separate. To go down the street. So, uh, from my understanding, it'll help with. Speed as well as. Fight. When you cut down the turnoff into the new police station drive or into the.
Now, assuming the design has been. Fully get, uh. For those islands, will they be on both sides of Third Street?
They're on all four, all four corners, so that actually already passed. Time, uh.
Okay.
Wilson is. And then pedestrian refuge that's further down to the middle of the crossing, is what they call it. That will connect the parking lot, other parking lot. Uh, across the street to integrate into the major area between the two buildings. I would also just say that a lot of what's being designed is very similar to Reston.
Well, one reason I. Question, the reason for this question is, is I know, uh, those who live in those manners. Three, why, I don't know, that's why I said it would help them a lot, so I just didn't know if this would be on both sides of Third Street.
Yeah, you're gonna have each, each corner, uh, will fall out, using what it's called, so the point of that is to reduce the amount of space that pedestrian has to. Traverse in the right of where the street is or they're in a, uh. A protected area, so this would be, uh, in a big bush, uh, so. Frank, um, coming on board has been that PDA client, so that's something we can do downtown. Uh, yet it extends now, as I like to say downtown is effectively growing by an entire block. Drive. Uh, but again, that's, that's part of it is that pedestrian walk really connected.
But in my own purposes, it's, it's, it's fair enough everyone, but I do know that certain segments of population can utilize those a lot. They much more appreciate them. And then. Thank you. Something here.
Nothing else, sir? Tom?
Yes, Mr. Stevens.
So, hey, vote. Uh, vote, tell us a state, I mean. So, any comment, discussion at all to work on possibly going to escape them? You guys are. All we have to, uh. Stay. Inside.
Well, yeah, these lawyers, they force them to see. They enforce them a lot, right?
It's funny.
That's, that's part of it is what, what, excuse me, what happened when it starts to be bald outs and sort of these pedestrian structures. What happened, what happens when pedestrian starts to have, oh, that's intentional with that design, so that would imagine it could cause somebody. Go slower than, I think, the police supplies, people going. Not 45 mile an hour. Bill. Even if not pedestrian, uh, accessibility, these facilities are important and is important. It's like, she has a net tutorial at 20 miles an hour anyway. It's. Hopefully, these things will create those distance.
You may have heard the third fact. Look, it's a, it's a, this. This is a form of fact. Central gathering. Or the driver. Supposedly, possibly naturally, slow down. Because it's not, you know, 14 block. Well, we want. I'm. Tom.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Saying that, so please.
Voting on a motion to approve the first contact decision with Kansas Department of Transportation, providing people with some further funding.
Yes.
Verlin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Please?
No.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Sorry, we want to sit down, bud. Moving on to our fourth final time. See that on O O that's one for five crossing. And we have.
Hello, informants of the city managers, I also have Mark Lee here, uh, from City Mayor, he said. He started with us at the end of the year. We also have Lance Fatt from CFS Engineering, he is here on the House of Assembly and Developer. Uh, this final class, um, and of course, they've kind of been heard before in 2019. They're fit for a year, um, and then, uh, the next steps are getting more, uh, development for it and work starting than, um, they aspire. So they were affirmed again by the planning commission. And they, by unanimous vote, approved the final class and recommended that you all accept the dedication of easements in March, right, as shown on final class. Um, there have been no changes, um, really since it, it was heard before. Um, it was update of the signature blocks and the state. And there are few conditions of approval that the housemate doesn't write all the copies, the first time it's the community. And the sales related to the project. And the work we do to enable all improvements on state of 118, we break whole part. And then a section of water is made here to align on the requirement, and you know, this needs to be placed with potential need information.
Good.
Make your question.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Lady, I think that.
Right now.
Right, so thank you, and sir, the topic today, I think. Doesn't matter. Very good, thank you. Anything else from the citizens, questions, concerns, comments? Saying that, if anything, a motion. Mr. Mayor, I think a motion could say that.
Also.
The move by Council Shannon and second by. Frozen girly.
I don't care. Don't care. You don't care. You disappear.
On that note, on that note. Questions or comments?
I'm just curious if the development, uh, the, the, not there and things are going, they're gonna impact at all on this project? I told you, if, if they can't use the coordination that's necessary between all the developing entities, kind of gather up the, uh, public. Same, how do you think they have on? Other.
Uh, it's, it's still very similar to what your original program was. Um, from. As far as. The R C A center president. Bush paper. Last half of 1400 units, presidential law that. Partner with senior. On those. The, the type of, uh. I'm saying, two hotels, I believe. Uh, yes, restaurants, the entertainment, still. Esports, performance art center, school component, retail component, so. It's the same.
But then, if the development is going in at the speedway or the, or markets and whatever else comes in there, does that have any impact?
We somewhat, but not substantial purpose, it's all, I think, really, even a change, maybe some improvements on Speedway Boulevard. Um, due to the. One time, remember, you were around about that, you might have heard of Tennessee, that was a lot of the choice. So the loop road stays the same, make sure it's a roundabout on Speedway. It's a.
I would. Others can. We don't, this, Doc, right? Where. Oh. Then it's that, then it's residence, and then it's that, I don't know. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, interest or a lot of excitement, this, uh, out. The excitement level now?
Excitement level is. Start, um, all of that's, okay. Sometimes. They happen. Plan is very grand, strange. Over full board for. There's maybe 100. In the.
Well, we, we've had that, but the best from your professional, whole professional team, so we, uh, we stand that you do, uh. He is professionalized. Team, uh, in this development, so welcome Mark Frump again.
Hi. President. Mike, certainly. Uh, please. Yes, he's. Certain stages, you know, for. Uh, it's. Everything you mentioned or being proposed to that side. simultaneous later.
Now. Like the possible ability. For us. Uh, they have a long time to strike. So, planning. Everything of the. Essentially. Play. The other might be alive. Obviously, a whole way. See, that's how much. Most of our, all apartments. But eventually, all the entertainment thing will last a little once, so. So that might start to touch earlier than everything else.
Ellen Stevens?
Actually, I think all the questions are already got into that.
Councilman.
That's new.
Councilperson.
Yeah.
Good job.
Anything else? Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments, thank you very much, both of you.
Voting on a motion to accept the dedication of easements in March, voting on the final flat. Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Verlin?
Yes.
Anan?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, I know it's been a long road for everybody and, uh, there's been a lot of things outside of everyone's control, so I appreciate that, for both of us, thank you. Uh, moving on to our fifth item this evening, our recreational registration software.
Hi, good evening, everyone, just taking speech preparation, Andrew, uh, but tonight we are asking to address who would be. To offer our recreation software. A little bit of background, we've been using a software called BlueRec for the last several years, and that's how we offer our registration to. Uh, maybe our online customers, it's also key factor of registration, respond with. Um, recently, and to that, at the beginning of this year, um, Flash stopped working, and that is how BlueRec operates, operating on Flash. Um, they did give us a fix, but it no longer works. And as we have tried to contact them multiple times to solve this issue, we've had trouble making from them. Uh, we had already been looking at different, um, recreation softwares, um, and these other issues that we have, have from the past. Um, knowing that we need to work with finance, um, and use a recreation software that supports the same gateway that finance currently uses for online processing. There were two reputable companies that we found that were, um, modules and things that reparations that needed to use. Um, those two worked with Rec and Town Technologies. Um, as far as the usability instead of Rec, we prefer that one more, um, to look more useful as far as the staff perspective. Um, both of the recreation softwares on the customer end, they looked great, we need, we want customers to use, be aware of them. But just were stacked input and not the ease room and for seasonal training, uh, we would prefer to use instead of Rec. They're, they, they just, they make a cheaper fan technology as well, um, implementing it about extended, because what they asked me to. Anything questions to add?
First one I have, that's.
Yes, it, um, that's the kind of, 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 so process of seeing if they use it for decorating outside.
Good, thank you, and Tyler. And is that?
Tyler Technologies, that's.
All the police department. With. Tyler. Yeah, so Tyler Technologies has purchased over a long span of time. Pretty much everybody in the public sector as far as, um, these types of technologies, so. New World was the R S system that we went. On in that time, right, Tyler Technology also got involved, so. Having, sure, certain states having the same issues too, as far as. Looking fondly back at that time, but, uh, yeah, Tyler, Tyler actually owns Indcode, which is our financial platform that we transitioned to our ERP. Right, um, program, so again, they're, they are a lot. And it changes every day, but, uh. It still gave me a shiver when I heard that. Thank. It's like before, very good. Thank you, anything else from other staffs? Citizens? Saying that, uh, anything, a motion?
Motion to authorize the city manager to execute a free, like, city rec for recreation registration software.
The move by Council Shannon and second by Council Thompson. Questions, concerns, comments, I will start right away with this council person.
That's simple, simple. Blue Rec has not responded to all of this. Yeah. Have everything explained so well that. Yeah.
There's some things around here. On top of this. It's not only. We, us, and also our hands, I'm glad you're.
What do other people have a regular opinion?
Of a lot of different things, um. It's so many different types of recreation software, it's from the IT to the fat companies that are budgeting for, and, um. There's, there's a lot of different options out there, knowing that we have, you see, the same gateway as the finance department for online processing, that kind of, that core was a toggle.
True. Perfect.
Let's see the annual recurring from civic, how does that compare to? Blue. Um, it is more expensive than Rec from the. Significantly more, the double more than you are. Every. Um. Does this allow for mobile access, like, even to the campus of the mobile, or does it give any of your field staff mobile access if they should? It's by, it's first, basically, where, um, so you can't use that on different sites for them. Company, and it's going with this, the, the number of users. And is it adequate or more licenses for digital users? The fee is based off of our annual income, um, so that is estimated, um, so based on our income from 2018, 2019, 2020, that's how the fees are spout. Um, so it will fluctuate that much. And how often do they? Holding annual evaluation? But it's. Users, is there license limit, and is it, is it one of the? Does it have the same? Potential, has you had programs to the rec offerings? Thank you.
The, uh, the Blue Rec. You know, was extremely cheap. Uh, that we did pay for. This year.
We paid for it in one week, so we paid for January.
Okay, but there's no, it's not like we paid for 21.
Right.
We just pay.
This is a. The stipulation.
Sir, nothing. Again, other questions, comments? Can you handle?
Voting on a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with city rec for recreation so, registration software, Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Verlin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much. Congratulations, I guess, software. Onto your report this evening, the, the quick, the manager.
I just, a couple brief things, uh, as a reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday, observation, uh, President's Day. And I just wanted to bring up. An event happening virtually through our library. This is a, uh, event that's being brought to, um, us in cooperation with a lot of area, uh, public libraries. Uh, and ultimately using the great resources in our backyard, which is the National World War One Museum. And Memorial, so on Wednesday, and free event, um, the information's listed as far as the website, you can go to do registration, but. It's called We've Been Here Before, and it is going to be, uh, sort of a recollection of 1918 through 1919. In the World War Two era, we certainly all come to remember, or at least the history lessons of, uh. The Spanish Flu pandemic, so this is going to be reviewed with that sort of. A focal point and drawing some parallel between today's world and then the world that shaped us as far as Spanish Flu. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to, uh, to be part of something that a lot of libraries worked in operation. Right, again, as, as it says about my report, that they say history doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes, and I just. Going to be a great event, so on that, that's all I.
Thank you very much, uh. This is now, I think, so over here was Council Shannon.
All right. I'm receiving the test, asking if there's any notice of delay in trash pickup this week, be to the left.
I believe, I don't believe we've received anything to date.
Yep.
However.
Yes.
If there is, please encourage our residents to report to 311 with the county as well as us.
Yeah. And I should know this, but I haven't looked at. Trash delivery, that's, that's Wednesday.
Shouldn't be.
I can look at this, I'm not.
Well, thank you.
Uh, I was, um, sorry, Peter, that the C D D. The, uh, community improvement, basically, it's all through all that. Uh. At 31, is there any feedback given that indicates that because of our. Past award, you know, award, being awarded that, uh, your bag and that it not being used, is that affecting the impact on? This program?
That was not part of the feedback we received, um, when we moved from the rehabilitation type of project to the demolition project. It moved categories for us, so before we were in the commercial rehabilitation block. And when you have a demolition project, you move over to community facilities. So there were at least 20 projects besides 16 awarded, and we were competing with streets. Bridges, community facilities, water pulling in, utilities, that, that sort of. Um, those sort of projects, um, so they. It's need based and they were awarded higher than on need than demolition project, so that helped us towards the bottom of this kind of area.
Notice it's curious if that, if it's on itself.
But is that not even in the past?
Yeah. Now, the, he says their owners are gonna look at some other potential ways of maybe dealing with, uh, or. Reapply this year, if they have. Move forward with any plans at that time?
Um, they have the opportunity to refine this year, that's what they'd like to do, um, they're kind of, uh, regrouping and deciding how they're going forward at this point. Um, and then once they decide over, it's in their conversation and, um, see how you can work with them and. Kind of move this forward, uh, but right now we're just a subtle, you know, option.
Yeah, it's kind of clean, we'd all love to see that, the clean up. Thank you.
Thompson? Thank you. You can, uh, the wood, uh, like they're seeing like. Thanks to the city. Workers, public utilities that have been out, that, something standing in five streets of our spring. This kind of, probably one of the hardest kinds of weather that it's stand top of, because it's very limited. Effectiveness of consulting. On the road, so. Uh, please be careful, encourage everyone to slow down. Imagine that would help out, and sleep. Uh. And, uh, be real careful. But. Get them. Uh, I know that our school district about. Ability to have school and, uh, very appreciative of everything. I did have, we talked with, uh, fairs of, uh. Line up Johnson County this last, last week, and, uh. Hope to be able to host them. Several. More than this, that's our. Just waiting to opening of our communities, our services soon. Do you have information on that for us?
Um, I included. Just, uh, a report for both facilities, the city and reported, I believe, I don't know if I checked, yes, I did, all right. Um, that's kind of go through and give people, uh. An understanding of pictures that are going on inside, it's neat, too, I included this, I think, on several occasions throughout the project preparation, just compare, contrast some of the early reports. To what, uh, what it looks like today, but. Uh, again, police are, are operating out of the facility currently, um, we are having to make some accommodations, just to ensure that we can still meet with the public, is that building's not. Completely, uh, done, uh, city hall is still on pace, uh, but that is also seeing some of the. Ramifications, uh, uh. Embargoes and, uh, trade disputes and COVID in general, so, uh, in particular, one of the day outstanding, outstanding issues is just boring features that are going in there, uh, tile specifically, so that's helped up the, the project. Uh, a little bit, but not a lot, um, but we're on pace to hopefully get this, uh, all wrapped up, um, springtime this year. A lot of landscaping, still, obviously, needs to get done, so the actual. Week project probably be closer, uh, the middle of the year, once we get. Plants within place and trees and whatnot.
Very good, any, anything, any, any other carry stuff?
Yeah.
Other than that, uh. That's for. Some of the things that are going through the campus legislature right now, they didn't have much information as to anything that would, uh. Possibly that would come out that. You can back on cities. So, uh, it's good to keep a record of the situation, there's some, uh, talk about, uh, stockpiles will be. Reinvented again, uh, and have many communities to apply those things. Which has a significant potential for development on it across the state as well, over. Other than that, uh, than that, I saw. That was everything I can think of, and for questions, if nothing else, there's. No other questions? For junk, after the biggest horse. Who's. That's our community, it's.